All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the August 21st, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I am calling to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll wait one second here to get everybody in here. It looks like we got them all piling in, and then we'll do the pledge.
All right, so we'll start the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the point where if anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a signup sheet out in the entry, and I know we didn't have anybody sign up, but is there anybody that came in that wants to speak on open forum that did not happen to sign up? All right, saying none, and we'll go ahead and close open forum. We'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
I motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Cambada, second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So next, as we're letting everybody come into the room here, which is pretty awesome, next is a presentation. We have an awesome presentation this evening, and it's regarding the retirement presentation to Brian Bingham. And I believe John is going to start the conversation or the comments, and then Council, if you'd join me down in the front, that would be fantastic. And then Brian, you're going to come up with us, too.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming, especially a lot of familiar faces, both present and past from our fire department. We're here to recognize Brian Bingham for 28-plus years of honorable service to the community of Cottage Grove and the Cottage Grove Fire Department. And when you dedicate that much time and you do that much for a community, it deserves many different forms of recognition, and this is just the first to recognize your great years. You will also be getting recognized at our annual banquet, so we'll save a seat for you there and maybe a few seats. So Brian has served over 28 years in the fire department, and he has served in many roles in the department, from firefighter, EMT, all the way up to the rank of captain. Brian, through the years, has served as a mentor and has had great influence on many folks' careers and their lives. And Deputy Chief Aragoni, who was mentored by Brian, he's away at an army, so he couldn't pull away from that to come here. And Nick would say, when I started on the department as an 18-year-old, fresh-faced kid, Brian was the guy. Brian's the guy you wanted to be. Brian was the one that was going to teach you how to do it and get you home safe. So that was just a great way of explaining who Brian was. And I remember that before I got to meet Brian in person, that's how Nick described you to me. So that was a big shoes to fill, and you filled them very well. And I've honored to have served with you for over four years. And then, just as a firefighter over 28 years, you go on thousands of calls, which Brian did, and really, just, it's hard to put that in numbers, but Brian had an absolute profound effect on thousands of people through his career, whether it was in the back of an ambulance or on the scene of a fire. Many times, Brian was in charge of those different scenes, but truly, there are thousands of Cottage Grove residents that have been affected by you in a positive way, and thank you for that. And just the lives you have changed, both from our firefighters to everyone in this community. And just a quick note, I still appreciate Brian works for Southern Washington County Schools, so anytime we have a fire alarm or an issue at the school, Brian's the first one there, and I'm just saying, thank goodness Brian's there, because, trust me, it helps us get through a lot of stuff. So thank you, Brian, and I'll turn it over to Council and other folks.
All right, so what I'm going to do, excuse me, first, though, is I'm going to invite our county commissioner, Carla Bingham, up here, hint, hint. Here we go. And by the way, I have her speech, because we knew she wasn't going to be able to do this. All right, so I'll start here. So again, we, as I'll just say, we obviously are all here to honor a former firefighter, Brian Bingham, for his 28 years of amazing service to the city of Cottage Grove and our community. Brian is joined tonight by his wife, Sarah, and sons, Aiden and Colin, his parents, Dan and Pat, which are there. You guys can wave. Yeah, there you go. His sister, who is next to me here, our Washington County Commissioner Carla Bingham, and her husband, John. And his sister Danielle did make it. I did see that. That's pretty cool. And obviously, her wife, who cannot be here tonight. So, and obviously, in support. So Commissioner Bingham has a commissioner's certificate to give you for your years of service tonight as well, but we also know she never would get through her comments without crying, so I'm here, I'm going to read some of the highlights, and I did note on here, John, get the camera ready. Brian has always wanted to be a firefighter. He is a fourth-generation firefighter. As a little boy, when the fire monitor tones would go off at home, he would rush to get his father's shoes, car keys, and make sure the garage door was open, so his dad could leave for the call quickly and start helping people. Brian started the Explorer Program in the Cottage Grove Fire Department, then became a firefighter, and then a captain of the department, and that was, I believe, after your dad had retired. The commissioner's certificate says, "On behalf of a grateful county and a proud little sister, the undersigned commissioner hereby extends recognition and appreciation to Brian Bingham, Cottage Grove firefighter, for your 28 years of outstanding service in support of Washington County's mission." So I'll make this, I'll turn it over. There you go. Let's give a round of applause there. So now what I'll do is I'll have Councilmember Olson hand him a little plaque here, and I'm going to read what's on the plaque, because it's clear. With my eyes, who knows? It just, on the plaque, it does say, Brian Bingham, Captain, Lieutenant, Firefighter, City of Cottage Grove Department of Public Safety, Fire and Emergency Medical Services Division, served 1995 to 2024. In recognition of over 28 years of dedicated service to the Cottage Grove Public Safety Department and the citizens of which we serve, Brian Bingham has been instrumental in providing the highest quality-based fire and EMS services. Brian has been a part of significant change and has had a direct impact on the excellent reputation, commitment to safety, and the high standards of the department. On behalf of the entire City Council, we thank you for your professionalism, your integrity, and commitment to the city of Cottage Grove. Your service to the department and citizens is greatly appreciated." And that says, "Thank you, Cottage Grove Mayor and City Council." So we'll go ahead and give that to him, then I'm going to make one more comment. So as these, as some of the firefighters, probably the police officers, know here, when something's going on in this community, if I'm aware of it, I'm there. So I just show up. And so there's been many a times, and it was mentioned earlier, where I'd show up at a scene, and he's there, and he's directing and making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, making sure they're safe, making sure the people that were in the homes are safe. And then there's one little story I'll mention. Many years ago, and I still have the pictures of this, I was invited, along with Ken Britton, who was a planning commission member, and were you at that one, too? All right, I don't, I don't... Well, and so we got the chance to go in a fire, a controlled fire, but it was a house that was being burned. And all I remember is as I, they put me on the equipment, and we're crawling along the floor, and they have the little machine that tells me it's like 500 degrees or whatever. And all I could hear him behind me going, "Mayor, slow down your breathing. Mayor, slow down your breathing." And then after we got out, I said, "Whatever you guys need, just tell me. We're good." So their deal that day was perfect, because I was like, okay, whatever the fire department needs, I don't ever want to have to go into that thing again. So I just want to say thank you. And we'll get to see you around town, and I'm sure we'll be at the event when you get recognized in front of the rest of your peers that aren't here tonight. But you've been amazing, and amazing, and instrumental in a lot of positive things within our community. So I didn't know, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you. When have I ever missed this opportunity, right? First of all, I want to thank our public safety director, Pete Kerner, and the rest of the leadership team, including Chief Pritchard, for allowing us to have this ceremony tonight. It was important to me personally, and I know to the council as a whole, that we recognize somebody who has put in as much time, energy, and effort into this community as Brian Bingham has. For those of you who know me, know me best, you know that I have a lot of love for the Bingham family. I'm standing here as a city council member, because this one over here said, "Well, quit complaining. Why don't you get involved?" She didn't say it quite that nicely, but that's what she said. And that started my journey as a public safety, health, and welfare commissioner, and then on the city council. And I'm the son of a firefighter. Brian's the son of a firefighter. In fact, as we mentioned, fourth generation. So I have a lot of memories, growing up as a kid, of what it smelled like at the fire station, what it sounded like when, it used to be called a plectron, would go off, and you'd hear the tones. I remember standing in my dad's boots and thinking that was the coolest thing ever. And Brian got to live that dream from his childhood as a firefighter for 28-plus years here in the city of Cottage Grove. Cottage Grove has a unique department. We are a mixture of full-time and part-time. Brian rose to the ranks of captain as a part-time firefighter. That's a pretty awesome accomplishment. I've seen him run scenes. He is the most professional, even-keeled, highly-respected leader that I can say I've ever seen. There are probably some who are his equal, but there are none who are better, none. And it's going to be a big loss, but he deserves this. He's put in the time. I think he's had a couple of body parts replaced from, you know, doing the different things, as has his dad, because being a firefighter is pretty physical, and it's pretty tough. But I want you to know that you have garnered the respect of so many in the department, but all of us standing here today as well. And Brian's a humble guy. He doesn't say a lot, but he leads by example, and he leads in an exemplary way. So thank you for all you've done. Thank you for all of the mentorship, as John mentioned, that you've provided to many of the firefighters still serving on the Cottage Grove Fire Department today. And thank you for your service to our community. I know you grew up in a family where service was just expected, and your family delivers all the time, and they always have, and they always will. So I'm not sure who's going to be next, if you're going to have Aiden or Colin, but I would suggest both, okay?
Well, I just want to mention real quick, I see our former police or fire chief is out there, Rick Reddiness, and a couple of the other recently retired, if you will, I see. And then the only other thing I want to send, then I'm going to hand this over to you, to see if, yeah, now he's going, oh, dang it. And I do this when we've had these opportunities. I want to thank the family, Sarah and the kids. I mean, literally, you know, if you didn't have a strong family behind you, and whether the family extends to mom and dad and sisters and so on, the fact is, you know, you get pulled away. It's Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, Thanksgiving, there's a fire, guess what? You're out the door, and they're left without you. And so I want to thank you guys for the years that you gave him to the citizens of Cottage Grove, because that's very important, and we cherish the opportunity that you gave us. So now I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Again, thank you to my family, everyone that supported me.
There we go. You got it, buddy. Do you want to have, let's get the family up here? Yep, mom, dad, too, all of you.
Yeah, we'll do that. Absolutely. We'll do that next. Let's get some family pics. Yep.
John, you're part of family. Get up here.
We'll get your picture, John.
Let's get the fire guys. Can you come up behind us? Come on. Yep, everybody up here. Rick, you guys out there? Come on in.
I don't think I have to worry about blocking you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
I didn't mean, that's the business.
Yep, we're good. All right. Well, that's a great way to start off the evening, that's for sure. All right, so the next item on our agenda this evening is consent. Are there anything that, or is there anything, I should say, that Council wants to pull on consent?
Yeah, I'll pull, what was it, B?
B, okay. Councilmember Thede B. Anybody else? All right, saying none, Councilmember Thede B. is an advisory committee on historic preservation appointment.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we had actually added a, or requesting to add a member to the Historic Preservation Committee, Cindy Yiff, and she's been very prominent in historical activity in the city and doing a lot. There was one specific thing, there was an old cemetery off of 70th Street that her and I think it was her sister, right, had done a lot of research on. It was very interesting. I didn't even know stuff was there and so forth. So we're extremely happy that she's interested in being on the Historic Preservation, just the type of person that'll make a great contribution to that group. And so I respectfully ask that she get approved tonight.
Fantastic. That'll be great. All right, saying nothing else being pulled on consent at this moment, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I motion to approve the agenda.
A consent, you mean?
Consent, sorry.
You got it. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you happen to be here for anything on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Next on our agenda is eight is approved dispersment, or pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Garza. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings. There aren't none this evening. Ten is bid awards. There aren't none this evening. Eleven is the regular agenda, and we do have one item this evening. The Preserve at Prairie Dunes Comprehensive Plan Amendment, zoning amendment, preliminary plat, and planned unit development. And Connor Jakes, our planner, is going to walk us through this, so welcome, Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Great to be with you this evening. The application, there are four applications before this evening for a proposed residential subdivision, currently referred to as the Preserve at Prairie Dunes. Four applications before you include a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning amendment, a preliminary plat, and a planned unit development. The subject site is located just south of the major industrial area of the city, more specifically, the North Point Development. To the east of the subject site is Lennar's Graymont Village, currently under construction, moving into their second addition. And to the west of the subject site is the DNR Scientific and Natural Area. The subject site does consist of approximately 60 acres in size. Currently on site are tilled fields with vegetated windbreaks. In terms of topography, the site is flat with minimal grade change. I just wanted to note that the Hadley Avenue and 105th Street Roundabout is located on the east side of the site that was constructed as part of the North Point Development. Before we jump into the applications before you, I thought it'd be beneficial to walk through the background of the site. A few of the council members may recall, in 2022, Summer Gate Development was before you with a very similar proposal and very similar applications. The proposal in 2022 did include approximately 100 acres due to the inclusion of the Zivic 40 parcel to the northwest of the subject site. And on that parcel included four outlots and the realignment of Hadley and 100th Street. The applicant at the time was proposing 161 lots for single-family homes. I will note, the proposal before you is very similar. There are two key differences. The first one being the lot sizes. So in 2022, the applicant proposed 55-foot lots, 50 to 55-foot lots in the northern part of the site. The applicant before you this evening is proposing 45-foot lots in the north portion of the development. The second key difference is the applicant in 2022 proposed a recreation trail along the western property boundary and proposed that to run along that property boundary about halfway up. However, the applicant before you is proposing that trail run the entire western property boundary. So those are the two differences between the 2022 proposal and the one before you this evening. After Summer Gate Development received approvals for the preliminary plat in 2022, they ended up walking away from the project due to market conditions and various factors. However, Norhart Architecture was in the process of receiving their approvals for the parcel on the eastern part of the Zivic 40. They recently closed on that parcel. However, in order for them to continue, they had to record a final plat and follow that process. So that final plat was approved and recorded in 2022. That created those four lots in the Zivic 40 parcel, dedicated the right-of-way for the roadway realignment, and created the southern lot as an outlot for future development, which is the subject site before you this evening. So the first application before you is a comprehensive plan amendment. The subject site is guided as medium density, low density, and industrial. However, the applicant is proposing to re-guide the northern 32 acres from medium density and industrial to low-density residential to align with the proposed guidance of the rest of the parcel. Staff is supportive of this. Comprehensive plan amendment, given the ability to develop a site that has a mixture of medium density and industrial in the northern part for that 32 acres is quite difficult. So re-guiding that to low-density creates a more developable parcel. That includes the whole 60 acres instead of it being sectioned off. So there is support there from staff perspective. The applicant is also requesting a zoning amendment to rezone the subject site from AG to agricultural to R4 transitional residential with a planned unit development. Just to touch on the R4 district, that is our transition zoning district that's intended for a range of lot sizes. So concentrating generally smaller lot sizes towards our more major roadways and more intense uses, so in this case, closer to the industrial areas, and then Hadley and 105th Street. The R4 does align with our recently approved developments of Graymont Village, as well as Settlers Bluff to the northwest of the subject site. The southernmost section, just to touch on, the Merka overlay district is within the Merka, more specifically, the SR, separated from River District, which is characterized by its distance from the Mississippi River. So the subject site is not visible from the river, however, still, that southern portion is within the Merka. The applicant is proposing a stormwater pond, as well as a recreation trail within the Merka overlay area on the south part of that site. So the preliminary plat before you is to plat 162 single-family lots for single-family housing. Lot widths, again, range in size from 45 feet to 65 feet. The 45-foot lots are called out in yellow on screen before you. The rest are proposed at 65 feet. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development, with the only request being to reduce the side yard setback of the 45-foot lots from 7.5 feet to 5 feet. The 65-foot lots and the 45-foot lots, other than that side yard setback, will meet all of their zoning district requirements of the R4 district. This reduction in side yard setback does align with our other 45-foot lots in the community, thinking along lines of Graymont Village, as well as Settlers Bluff. So following in line with the previously approved development standards for those developments. Access to the site is provided from 105th Street, as well as the Hadley Avenue extension, currently under construction as part of the South District Street Utility Project, and utilities were extended to the site via 105th Street. In terms of pedestrian connectivity, the applicant is proposing internal five-foot sidewalk system, as highlighted in blue on screen before you. A transportation trail is proposed along Hadley Avenue, as highlighted in orange, and a recreation trail is proposed along the west side of the site. And again, that trail is proposed to run the entire west side of the property boundary, as highlighted in green on screen before you. And just to note, all trails are consistent green on screen before you, and just to note, all trails are consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Given there are numerous qualifying mature trees on site, the applicant did submit a detailed tree inventory and is required to follow the tree preservation ordinance of the city code. I won't bore you with the numbers, however, I just wanted to mention the inches to mitigate is fifty-three point two five inches, so that can be satisfied through two options, either replacement on site of planting of additional trees, or a cash in lieu of fee. The tree mitigation method would be memorialized in the development agreement with the final plat. The applicant did submit a detailed landscape plan that meets, meets or exceeds all requirements of the landscape ordinance. Two things I wanted to mention was, the applicant is proposing to have additional plantings along that roundabout to act as a visual buffer, visual brake, and the applicant is proposing a total of four stormwater ponds throughout the site, along the western part of the site, as well as the south. With that, the recommendation is on screen, I will invite the developer up just to talk more in depth on the proposed product.
Okay, let's first, anybody on council have a question for Connor? Councilmember Olson?
Connor, thank you, very nice job, as always, very hopefully easy question for you this evening. You mentioned the boulevard trees, and I'm, I'm looking for clarification, are we talking true boulevard trees, or are we talking front yard trees? Because the ownership is different.
Yeah, Councilmember Olson, that's correct, the on-screen are boulevard trees, so there would still be our required boulevard trees, as stated in the table, and then the lot trees as well, and then those boulevard trees, either within the grassed area between the sidewalk and the curb, or within fifteen feet of the boulevard or curb line if there's no sidewalks.
And the reason I ask, of course, is sometimes residents get confused. I, I myself have a front yard tree, I did, that I thought was a boulevard tree, and turned out it wasn't a boulevard tree, so when it came time to treat that tree, and actually, we ended up removing the tree, you know, it, it became very important to know the difference, so, anyway, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, kind of on that same theme, can you bring up the, the chart again of the, of the changes and so forth, where it was showing the forty-five foot lots and all the different sizing, and what was the front yard setback? Twenty, twenty-five feet, and, and so the, so the boulevard easement is, comes into that, how, where, where, how far from the house is this boulevard tree actually going to be?
Uh, yeah, generally, that boulevard area is about thirteen feet, you know, starting from the back of curb to the front property line, so usually, that's about the distance, thirteen to fifteen feet, and then that boulevard tree is within that area of the thirteen feet, however, if there's a sidewalk, it would be located between the sidewalk and the curb.
Because as we, we've been discussing, you know, as these lots get narrower and narrower, on a, on a sixty-five foot, seventy-five foot frontage and so forth, there's a lot more, lot more space and room, and, and ultimately, we start putting a lot of these boulevard trees, and they're, they're actually getting closer to because of the narrowing lots, and I guess I, I don't know if we'd, we'd change this necessarily, but I guess something that we should probably discuss more and, and.
Well, and I think that's, Councilmember Thede, and what the public may be wondering is, we're having some conversations at a council level, staff level, on placement of trees, or having boulevard trees in some of these smaller areas. Now, it isn't that we're going to necessarily have less trees, it's just maybe they're not a boulevard tree, and that's what you're referring to, and I think even Councilmember Olson was in essence referring to, because we literally, just in the last month, have had some discussions about what makes sense going forward, versus having trees that are pulling up sidewalks, or, or streets, or utilities, so. All right, good question. Any other comments, council? All right, if you want to invite the developer up, that would be fine. While you see, while you're setting it up there for you, just state your name and address for the record, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Haley Daly, we office in Bloomington, our address is sixteen fifty West Eighty Second Street, Suite three hundred. I also have here today Dean Lauder, who's our Director of Land Planning and Entitlement, and my title is Land Manager of Entitlement as well. Just briefly go over our agenda today, I'll try to keep this short, just going through a quick introduction of who Pulte is, as well as our approach to the site, our proposed homes, and then any questions in a summary as well. So Pulte, we started in nineteen fifty, we're a national home builder in the United States, and as you can see from the image, we build all around in the Twin Cities, including in Cottage Grove. We are focused on consumer-driven designs, which really what that means is, we take a lot of feedback from our current home buyers and do a lot of research in, for future home buyers, to figure out exactly what current home buyers want and what the market can sustain. In the Twin Cities, we sell homes under two brands, Pulte Homes and Del Webb, this proposed community would be a Pulte Homes brand. So our approach to the site, as Connor had said, is very similar to what was previously proposed. We are proposing forty-five foot lots on the northern section, just north of that roundabout, this is just more of a zoomed-in photo, since the project is quite linear, and then south of the, excuse me, the roundabout, we are proposing the sixty-five foot lots. On our forty-five foot lot homes, we are offering five different floor plans, as well as multiple elevations, so there'll be a lot of variety within these homes. They range in size from just under sixteen hundred square feet to just under twenty-two hundred square feet, two to four bedrooms, two to two and a half baths, two-stall garages, and these homes can be one or two stories as well. Here are just some more photos of what the homes are proposed to look like. As you can see, we offer a different variety of color packages, different types of window grids, stone on these, and as well with the inside, we really focus on an open living kind of concept, really high-quality cabinets, high-quality cabinets, everything to kind of make this home feel unique and have a great feel to it. For our sixty-five foot lots, we will offer six different floor plans with multiple elevations. These homes are a little bit larger, since they are on larger lots, they range just under twenty-four hundred square feet to thirty-three hundred, just underneath that, and this does not include basement square footage. These homes will be three to four bedrooms, two to two and a half baths, the sixty-five foot lots, we also are proposing three-stall garages, and these homes can also be one or two stories. Again, here are some more photos of what we are proposing. As you can see, there's different architectural features, such as different types of accent siding, dormers, brackets, different type of shutters, and again, on the inside, large bedrooms, as well as a large living space, with again, high-quality products for the countertops, cabinets, everything from basically top down to up, so. That's just kind of a quick summary of what we are proposing, again, hundred and sixty-two total homes, multiple product types with all different types of color packages, and home elevations to create a really diverse feel for all future residents, and then all of our homes, of course, are extremely high-quality and aesthetically pleasing. And so I can stand for questions, or anything that may.
All right, any questions from council for the applicant? They could do a good job, and obviously, we're familiar with Pulte and town here, so you guys are a great builder, so we're happy with that, and again, it's, it's nice to see how you're trying to blend a couple diff, I'll call it different communities within a community, if you will, with the different types of housing styles or types of sizes, too, because we're obviously, as, as our council was just mentioning up here, we're seeing a lot of variations of what people want these days, no yard, big yards, and all that kind of stuff, so it's kind of interesting, so it's cool that you guys are, are keeping your fingers on the pulse, so to speak, of what the, what the homeowners are wanting these days, so.
So just one, one comment, too.
Yeah, Councilmember Thede.
And I do, I do kind of like some of your, your newer designs, I, I know the older ones, the garage was very prominent to the front of the house, and, and you've, you've adjusted that a little bit more, I think, because a lot of the older Pulte homes, I think, were, had the garage kind of out front, right?
That's great.
Looks, yeah, it looks nice, the different ones look very nice. Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Connor, just for, can you put the, the different motions up there? I know I have it in front of me here, but I want to make sure we catch everything. All right, council, unless you have any other questions for either staff or the applicant, you can see we have three different votes that we need to take this evening, so if somebody wants to take number one, Councilmember Kamada?
I'd like to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one eight, approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to re-guide the northern thirty-two point one five acres of the subject property from medium-density residential and industrial to low-density residential.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada, and a second by Councilmember Olson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Who would like to take number two? Councilmember Garza?
I would like to adopt ordinance number one zero eight four, approving the zoning amendment to change the zoning of the subject property from AG dash two agricultural to R dash four transitional residential with a planned unit development.
All right, so we have a motion, motion by Councilmember Garza, was that a second? Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and who would like number three?
Mayor, I'll move Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one one nine, approving the preliminary plat for a subdivision to be called the Preserve at Prairie Dunes, which will consist of one hundred and sixty-two lots for single-family homes.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede, last chance, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with the new development. Fantastic, thank you, Connor. All right, next on our agenda this evening is council comments and requests, and I will start where I normally do down here with Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start off by just thanking staff for all their hard work, again. We've got a couple weeks left of summer here, so anybody who's looking to get out and enjoy themselves in and around Cottage Grove, a couple of things that I'd like to highlight are, we still have the kayak rental down at Hazen P. Moore's Park, you can register online. Tomorrow is Food Truck Thursday, it's Twin City Taco, that's probably where I'll be having lunch, if anyone wants to stop down, and if you go on the Cottage Grove website, there's a ton of other opportunities, you can also visit discover cottagrove.com.
Fantastic, thanks to you, Councilmember Kamada, how about Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple things, first, I want to compliment our staff at River Oaks Golf Course. The mayor and I actually had an opportunity to play in the Park High Hall of Fame Golf Tournament recently with Commissioner Bigum and another gentleman who plays with the mayor in a league, and we had a terrific time, the course was in phenomenal shape, the irrigation is really making a difference on the course, but what I really was impressed with was, after we were all done playing, and we had the banquet event in the banquet hall, you know, we, we had it bursting at the seams, they had the maximum number of players that they could manage for that tournament, and the staff there at River Oaks made sure that everybody had food and, and drinks, and the hospitality was just off the charts great, so thank you to Zach, and to Dennis, and Courtney, and the team down at River Oaks for a wonderful experience this year with the Park High Hall of Fame Golf Tournament. And then, the other thing that I just wanted to touch on, Mayor, is teachers go back to school next week. They are starting to put together their rooms and, and get ready for the start of the new school year, which of course, for most students is right after Labor Day, but I know that the teachers are going back, and I just wanted to take a moment to, first of all, thank them for the job that they do. A lot of people think that teaching's a part-time job, I've heard that a lot, oh, they get the summers off, they really don't, you know, they're, they're constantly doing continuing education and making sure that, you know, they, they keep up their credentials and those sorts of things, and the summer months is when they do that. But we're very lucky to have a terrific school district here in Cottage Grove, South Washington County Schools is second to none, in my opinion, and I might be biased, because of course, that's where I went to school. But I want to congratulate all of the teachers on getting back to school, and I want to encourage all of the residents, as you start to see those school buses moving here in the first week of September, please pay attention, please follow the rules, don't try to pass a school bus when it's got its stop sign out, watch for pedestrians, a lot of kids walk to school, and, you know, the school does a nice job, especially with the younger kids having crossing guards, et cetera, but that won't always be the case. So pay attention, slow down a little bit, watch out for our, our students, and make sure that you pat your, your kid's teacher on the back, they're doing, in my opinion, the most important job that there is, which is turning our young people into wonderful citizens and people who have a great education, so that's all I've got, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Fantastic, thank you, I'll move over to Councilmember Thede.
So I am really excited, I'm really excited, because when the Cottage Grove report came in the mail the other day, you, you gotta go find it, because what was in there was a coloring contest! I was so excited, I was gonna sign up, but I think, I, I think the age is, you know, just, just too young, but, but so, all you kids that are watching out there, go see your parents, find the Cottage Grove reports, get the coloring contest sheet, because I expect to see a ton of really neat colored pictures, and, and that's actually all happening with the puzzle, there's, this is a great, great deal with the Dowdell Puzzle, which you're gonna have to go buy one of those, too, because it's fantastic, it's a history of Cottage Grove and everything, and, and, you know, there's just, just so many things on there, and you can actually put the puzzle together, how much fun is that? And, and so forth, and I know they're gonna sell out quick, so you gotta make sure, and that's on, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that's on September fourteenth, that is actually the, the Dowdell Puzzle, and is that when the?
That's also the Food Truck Festival Day.
And is that when this gets turned in, too?
The deadline for submission is Wednesday, September fourth, for that.
Oh, right there, September fourth, so over Labor Day weekend, kids, if, if not before, get your crayons out, or your colored pencils, or markers, whatever gets used these days, and, and get your picture actually colored and turned in, because it's gonna be a blast. And I think that's all I got.
Okay.
That's amazing.
I gotta take a breath or a drink of water here, I don't know.
Coffee nervous.
I know.
A lot of energy.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Thede, how about Councilmember Garza?
Um, I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow, the state fair starts, and we have an absolute amazing park and ride, so make sure you utilize that, it'll get you down there super fast, and it keeps you out the crowds, and all the, the driving, and the traffic, and all the things, and it's a nice size, so use our park and ride and go and enjoy the state fair.
Fantastic, there you go. So I have a couple items I thought I'd just share, and it kind of leads a little bit into, and I'm sure we'll talk more about this at the, I think we have one more council meeting before the, the event, and that is, on Saturday, September fourteenth, we have the Dowdell Painting Reveal, and that is going to be at the Cottage Grove Middle School from eight to eleven, and I wanted to mention that because a lot of work went into that, not, and not specific to us, or even staff, but just getting information, and I would just tell you, the rendition that we saw of this puzzle that was created of the city of Cottage Grove, it, we're talking history, going way back, all the way up to today, and current, so I just, it's, you're gonna love it, and this, as, as Councilmember Thede was mentioning, is an opportunity to purchase one of those puzzles that day after it's unveiled, and there'll be some special guests here that are going to be a part of the unveiling, that make up some of the history of Cottage Grove over the years, so I encourage everybody to join us on that, and then, of course, that same day, from eleven AM to seven PM at Kingston Park, is a Food Truck Festival, there's going to be bounties, music, a marketplace, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff, it's almost like a strawberry fest all over with more food trucks, but it's gonna be fantastic, and so I encourage everybody to come and meet and eat and have some fun, so definitely go to the, the Dowdell Painting Reveal, and then head on over to Kingston Park and, and check things out there. I also wanted to mention, it's on our, our notes in here, is, the city Cottage Grove has a public safety board that does a fantastic job of raising money to support a whole host of things that deal with public safety, whether it's helping purchase or putting money towards our canines, outfitting our canines, it could be our fire department, it's also, you know, our police officers sitting with training and different things like that, the speed trailer, speed signs, those things that, you know, we get a lot of calls from, from the, that's all, not just, a lot of that actually isn't paid for, if you will, by the city of Cottage Grove, in many cases, of like the speed signs and that, that's been money that's been put aside and donated to the public safety board. And I wanted to mention that they're actually doing a golf tournament, you mentioned River Oaks earlier, on Friday, September twentieth, it's, it is a Friday, and it's a seven AM check-in, it is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a person, and I encourage you to try to get a foursome together, for anybody out there. For anybody out there, obviously, I'll be there with a foursome, and the idea here, of course, is the, other than paying for what they have to do with food in the golf course, all of those proceeds are going back to the Public Safety Board to provide opportunities for all those things that I just shared with you and more on, on the needs of our Public Safety Department and Fire Department. So again, that is River Oaks on September twentieth. Check-in time is at seven o'clock. Even if you don't have a foursome, if you want to sign up, you can either go to the River Oaks site or reach out to one of us here, I know it's out in the city site too, will be more than happy to help get you accommodated and maybe find you some people to help with, with your foursome. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is, as we're, as we're getting deeper, if you will, into the fall, you're probably starting to see, as you did in the, in the Cottage Grove reports that just recently came out, more and more information about the Preserve Play Prosper proposal that we have on the ballot coming up in November. The one thing I wanted to mention is, and I want to really give kudos to our staff, is, you know, when we see things out on different sites, whether it's, you know, commenting on, you know, when we post something about Preserve Play Prosper, there might be questions about certain things, or why, what about this, or how did you come up with this idea? First of all, ask the questions, our staff responds. One of the questions that was presented to me, and staff took it and ran and, and put it out there, is, I had a lot of people ask me about, where are those surveys that you've done over the years that kind of came up with the ideas, and whether it's what we ended up with today, because there were surveys that had been done years ago that really wanted a water park, as an example, and then there's more current surveys that really talked about the, the, getting access to the river and different things, expansions of our parks. And so I just wanted to let you know that if you want to see any of that data, it is actually out on the website now. And so again, if you go to preserveplayprosper.org, you can see a whole bunch of information about all the projects, the three projects that are being proposed, answer, ask questions, what the expectation is from a cost standpoint, if you will, a tax standpoint, but also if you want to look at the survey results that we've done over the years from our citizens of Cottage Grove, which are many, and thousands and thousands of people have voiced their opinions, please check that out. It's out there for you to take a look at, and again, if you have questions, whether you want to push it up through the website, or if you want to reach out to myself or one of the council members, we'll, we'll work to get you the information. So I just wanted to throw those few things out there to kind of end, end the council meeting, if you will. I will just say, thirteen on our agenda is a workshop which is open to the public. We don't have anything, and same with, oh, I'm sorry, we do have a workshop that is closed to the public, and I'll just mention too that it is a performance evaluation for our city administrator, Jennifer Levitt, and I'll just mention it in here on the record that this meeting, when we do it, will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero five subsection three A to perform, or I'm sorry, to conduct a performance evaluation of city administrator Jennifer Levitt. So with that, council, why don't we head into the conference room, and we will adjourn from in there. Have a good evening, everyone.